Well, good morning, everybody. Welcome to the April fifteenth, two thousand and twenty five, Delta County Order of Commissioners Regular Meeting. Please stand and join me in the Plaid of Allegions. Thank you. Do we have any additions or edits to our agenda today?
I have none.
Thank you. The agenda will stand as presented. Constituent time, we would welcome anybody who'd like to visit with the Commissioners to come with us up front. David Moran. Good morning.
Good morning. Happy tax day, dear.
That it is. Please, uh, is that mic on red? Yeah. Please introduce yourself and where you live.
For those who don't know me, my name is David Moran. I live at one five five two five Peach Road in Cedar Edge, Colorado. Got the truth, Bill. I'd like to go ahead and address the Commissioner Dave.
Please.
Let's see, I'm the owner of Energy Field Security here in Delta. I am a distributed energy resource developer. I have the, I am a microgrid initiative director on the EMP Task Force for National and Homeland Security. Also on a congressional advisory board. It's called Secure the Grid, as well as a member for Emperor Guard. Another grid initiative at a federal level. I would like to go ahead and talk to you about what we can bring, offer our help. We've been doing distributed energy resource since two thousand and ten. It wasn't only defined here until the last past few years. Sat on the board for the, when we were turned over from Delta for the Delta One and was able to go ahead and start talking to people about how our process of being able to have a distributed energy resource development here. Since then, I've been, and that was in two thousand and nineteen, since then, I've gotten some strategic partners, in particular, a molten salt nuclear developer out of Idaho National Lab that's got promised to be the ninth unit out of there. I've got ahead and have several investors. Couple of them are trading, have trillion dollars into investing into small and modular nuclear reactors. I also have the ability to go ahead and bring in the Colorado Nuclear Alliance. For any initiative that you guys are doing, that you wanted to help to bring, that they were able to go ahead and they were the driving force behind ten forty to get nuclear classified as a green energy. One, go ahead and they're backing our sustainability capabilities, not just been, not just selling as energy as a business, but also how to sustain us, how to go ahead and put out modular nuclear reactors. Not only for continuity governor, the continuity of government, but also for emergency management. So, um, I'm offering my help. That's all. Let me in, guys. I can help. Bring money. I got money. I got money.
Have you been in contact with Matt Sullivan? He's also on a parallel track with that.
No, I haven't. But you know what? I got a lot of people that want to go ahead and get it done. I see getting the uranium out of our, your banned mineral mines. Bringing manufacturing here for productions of molten chloride fuel salt and shipping it up to Idaho. I'm talking about industry. I'm talking about an infrastructure, a secure supply chain. And if you guys are needing help, let me know. Let me know. All right. That's it.
Well, we are, I am supportive on all of the above energy. Appreciate the work you're doing there.
So. Say it again. Let's do it.
Thank you. Appreciate you being here today.
I appreciate you guys.
The reactor operators. That was interesting.
We need more people out there. Order V Hill and Heidi Barshak, please join me.
Morning. Thanks for having us. My name is Heidi Barshak. I've been a real estate broker for twenty five years across the western states and here in Delta for three. We are bringing, we have some notes for you if I could pass. So three of you, three sets of those. We are bringing a movement to Delta called Walkable Wednesday, let you know about it so you're in the know when you start hearing about it and seeing about it. Our goal is to bring economic viability, to encourage people to walk to our downtown and support local, to get outside, to create safer neighborhoods, and to create more sense of community. So that's what we're here for today. You're going to be seeing our signs and Facebook and all our business and people cooperating with us. We'll be talking with the schools and the police department as well about safety and all of the initiatives that it brings with it. And so we just wanted to introduce it. I will be doing this through the end of August and we'll come back and let you know how it went. And I want to share our mission statement with you. And so Portia, go ahead and do that.
Portia V Hill, sixteen forty one H Street in Delta.
Sorry.
One address. And it, we just feel like this is one, we had the idea, but it's a great timing. As of next year, we're going to have some disruptions on Main Street. So we just feel like it's a great motivation momentum to keep long-term patronage. Delta, encourage people to come and walk. Tourists love to walk and also it enhances the real estate market when you have people out moving around in a community. So our mission statement is, our goal for Walkable Wednesday is to foster a thriving connected community in Delta by promoting the benefits of walkability. Community support will help to strengthen bonds among residents, support local businesses, and embrace sustainable living. By empowering our neighbors to explore Main Street and beyond, we can explore the charm, health, and vitality of our small town while building a stronger and more united Delta together, one step at a time. So we're taking the site, say hello to someone new, and enjoy the simple act of walking together. This is what building community looks like. Thanks for being here and remember, good things happen on Main. So that's our mission statement.
Thank you.
We just wanted you guys to be aware. So if you see it, you know what we're doing.
Joe, too.
Thank you.
Anyone have any questions? Has anybody ever heard of walk score or walkability before? Yeah, okay. Good. If you have a high walk score, your house has a little more value and it's a great feature.
Very good. We wish you the best on this one.
Yeah.
Anybody else like to address the board this morning?
In there on the computer.
Well, it's time for Terry Stevenson.
Good morning, Commissioners. Before you may have the minutes for the first two thousand and twenty five orders of regular thing, are there any additions, additions, or changes?
I have none. I saw none. Thank you, Terry.
I also have your consideration of a special events license for NFRIA, WSERC, Conservation Center, doing businesses, Western Slope Conservation Center. This is to be located at the Payonia River Park, seven fifty nine Shady Lane in Payonia, on June seventh from four P M to eight thirty P M. This is their annual event. The only difference this year is that they're encompassing more of the park so that the, the people attending can interact with the vendors and I received all documentation and necessary postings have been done. So therefore I am recommending approval of this special event from now.
Questions on this, Commissioners?
Well, I move that we approve the special events license for NFRIA WSERC Conservation Center, DBA Western Slope Conservation Center to be located at Payonia River Park, seven fifty nine Shady Lane in Payonia on June seventh, two thousand and twenty five, from four P M to eight thirty P M.
I will second the motion.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. So does.
I also have another special events license for the American Legion Wilson Headpost number ninety seven, located at four zero seven seven two Lamborn Mesa Road in Payonia for July fourth, two thousand and twenty five, from three P M to two A M. This is also something annually that they do. All notices, excuse me, all notices and fees have been paid and therefore I would recommend approval of this special events license.
Questions, Commissioners? What'll be the will of the board then?
I would make a motion that we grant a special events license for American Legion West Wilson Headpost number ninety seven at four zero seven seven two Lamborn Mesa Road, Payonia on July the fourth, two thousand and twenty five, from three P M to two A M.
I second that and I see they're going to party until two A M.
I was gonna make a comment about the two A M, but I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna go there.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. So does.
Thank you.
Thank you, Terry. Commissioner Business.
Okay, first we have Roden Bridge Foreman, Dave Herron, and John Allen to come forward, and Scott Cheats, Public Works Director. Possible award for the final bid tally for the two thousand and twenty five RFP zero nine asphalt and emulsion.
Good morning, gentlemen.
Good morning.
A lot going on with this bid. Sir? Thanks, John.
I'll let John start here.
So we'll start off with CRS two R bid, which chips seal up. We would recommend going with Black Rock Material, which the company formerly, formerly known as Quebeco, which is who we've gone with for a good number of years. Their price is about sixty four cents a gallon more than the low bid. And what that equates to is a company with product we know as compared to a product we don't know. And this is the first year that it's been made for the state of Colorado. And we don't know exactly what that means. It's been made in Utah, produced in Utah. It equates to either fifteen miles or fifteen tankers of oil or it equates to eighteen tankers of oil. We would rather put out fifteen tankers of oil, a product we know that will work than eighteen of something we don't know. And this does not affect the budget. Our budget is what it is. It simply equates to three less tankers of oil, which is just under three miles less product that we can put out.
Is this a better product or is it just?
We've got specs from Black Rock as well as SunCore. They are similar. There's certain trade secrets that they kind of keep a little open in the belt, which makes sense. We would like to let somebody else be the guinea pig for this year. We would like to go and see the product. Somebody's going to use it. Somebody close is going to use it. We'd like to go and watch it be put out. The true test would be see what it looks like after snow removal for a full winter and see what it looks like the next spring, but.
So you're saying you're going to get three extra miles out of fifteen trucks versus the eighteen trucks?
So a tanker of this material will do about a mile. It's a little bit less.
Three miles.
Three gallons.
Yeah.
So if, so if we at three sixty four gallon, we can purchase fifteen tankers of that oil. At three dollars a gallon, we can purchase eighteen tankers of that oil, which equates to about a little less than three miles less product we can put out.
I can see not wanting to invest in a product that we don't know whether it's going to stand up for, well, like for the service life of that chip seal. But there is quite a variance in the pricing here.
There is.
But we have to think more than just one product because we got all that and all the material, other material and time and labor in this one. What do you guys think?
Well, it'll be interesting to see what the, what the other people come up with, that they actually use the new stuff. If they like it, then I guess we can reconsider.
Our presumption is that, you know, they would both obviously need most likely state of Colorado specs. They have kind of a wide specs are specific but not entirely specific. And judging by the two spec sheets, there is, there is variance in there. A lot of the numbers we may not understand as well as we'd like to, but we've been using it for a long time. A lot of times we can tell when it goes down, how it's going to react. Sometimes you won't know till after the first winter of snowplow and whether the, whether the chips actually stay down. In, in years past, been quite a while ago, but we use some inferior oil. I don't know the situation around that. That was quite a while back, but by the next spring, most of the chips were gone. They didn't stick.
It's awfully big gamble.
And we're not, I'm not necessarily saying that that's what's going to happen with this other oil. I don't want, we just don't know.
What we'd like to do is try to find somebody that's using that new oil this year and then go look at it for ourselves this spring. This next spring to see how it held up. Well, it makes sense to me. Just rather than us be the guinea pig, let somebody else be the guinea pig and see how it goes.
And like you said, it's not, it doesn't affect us. Doesn't affect the budget. Please don't run the budget. We will stay within it.
We've got a warm here. We'd like to assign you two.
Mike, what do you think?
I don't know that much about oil or roads. I would go with what Mr. Allen and the road group suggest. Like you say, something that may work and may not, but why not stay with something that we know is tried and true, we've had good luck with. And like you say, I would go with their recommendation.
Because this is, we got multiple bidders, five bidders on multiple products here. Let's do this line by lines. We got it right. Kind of a gamble here, but it's a big decision, so. But I respect the wisdom you guys bring on this one, so. Mike Craig, what do you want to do here?
Well, I move that we accept bidder number one, Black Rock Material and Supply out of Denver for the CRS two R in the dollar amount of five hundred and sixteen dollars, eight hundred and five hundred and sixteen thousand, eight hundred and eighty dollars.
Five sixteen, I was gonna jump all over that. I would, I would second that motion.
Anything else, gentlemen? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Nice. So does. Next item is item number two for SS one, which is our pack oil that we spray before laying asphalt. And there was one bidder for that from SunCore Energy for the amount of eleven thousand dollars. An F of week Grand Junction, then they're not delivering?
Uh, that we never have on that. We run our small pack truck Grand Junction to get load when we need it.
Okay. Gentlemen, where are you at?
Well, we've got one bid and we need this stuff, so. I'll make a motion that we grant RFP, is it SS one? Or is that the product?
SS one is the product.
Okay, and where's the, is this the RFP oh nine up here? RFP oh, two thousand and twenty five RFP dash oh nine, line item two to SuCor, SunCore Energy out of Commerce City, Colorado with the amount of eleven thousand dollars even.
I second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Uh, the third item is AEP and that is, that is also tack oil that we would put down on gravel before we lay asphalt. One bid, we got a particular line item as well, that was Enviro Road LLC.
Go ahead.
I move that we accept bidder number three on RFP oh nine, Enviro Road LLC out of Grand Junction for AEP delivered to Delta County in the amount of three thousand five hundred and forty dollars.
I'll second that motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So does.
Line items four, five, and six are all basically, basically the same product. Uh, you can see line items five and six have point three percent and point five percent anti-stripped. Integrated into the PG fifty eight twenty eight, which is our asphalt oil. Typically, we use PG fifty eight twenty eight with a point three percent anti-strip. That's typically what we run through. We ask them to bid all three where we have a variance should we need it. We would like to suggest that we go with the SunCore for line items four, five, and six.
Only one other bidder for line item four, correct?
Yeah.
And he's from Dublin, Ohio.
That new, first time we've seen that particular company.
Probably saw it on the computer and threw a bid at it.
Could've been.
What does anti-strip do?
It keeps the product a little more pliable. We kind of build our asphalt to move with the road as opposed to break off sharply. A lot of our soils around here, drive between here and Otchus or here in Grand Junction, get a lot of this, a lot of this, even in state highways. Our soil is pretty conducive to that. The anti-strip will, will let the oil bend instead of break off hard. If we just went with the straight PG fifty eight twenty eight, it would be a, it would be similar to concrete. When it breaks, it breaks and chunks fall down or set. So this, the anti-strip keeps it somewhat pliable.
Thank you.
I'll make a motion that we accept twenty twenty five RFP dash oh nine, line items four, five, and six to bidder number four, SunCore Energy out of Commerce City, Colorado, line item four being four hundred and eighty five thousand two, five hundred and twenty dollars even. Line item five being five oh two, three twenty. Line item six being five hundred and ten, seven hundred and twenty.
I second that.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. I know you guys have worked pretty hard on getting these numbers and getting new products right. So thank you. That took a while to get, get it done right. We'll do our due diligence and keep digging on the one and learn a little more this year. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next beer consideration, IT Director John Latta for Board's consideration and possible award of the final bid for two thousand and twenty five RFP fourteen DTAC rugged patrol computers for Simo.
Um, I assume you have the bid tally and the letter that I wrote up for Terry to include in the packet. Uh, we, we received twenty four bids. They varied quite a bit in price. Some of, I just kind of summarized the top five in that kind of narrative letter. Bidder number eighteen had the lowest bid with the specifications that we were asking for. For a total of seventy four thousand, four hundred and forty five dollars. And so my recommendation is to award it to them.
Twenty four bidders. Is that normal?
Um, it kind of depends on kind of how the, how the bid is. I mean, these are just products. They're not services. So anybody that deals in these products can submit a bid. It's, you know, shipping, there's no real local tie to it, so.
And this is for fifteen notebooks.
Yeah, they'll go in the, the rugged ones that go in the vehicles.
Yeah.
And you said bidder eighteen?
Uh, yeah, SciTech.
Okay.
I think that's how you say their name. We've ordered from them in the past.
What's service life on one of these notebooks?
Uh, we're going for five years. And after that five years, we try to kind of cycle them through the ones that are still in good shape. And, you know, I think buildings and grounds may have one. I think we have one just to take out and do whatever. They're pretty robust systems. They're not something people want to take to conferences just because they're so bulky. But they're made to sit in a car and rattle around and heat and cold and that kind of stuff.
Other questions for John on this?
No. Why move that we for twenty twenty five RFP dash fourteen awarded to bidder number eighteen, SciTech Incorporated out of Fremont, California for fifteen notebook computers, total dollar amount seventy four thousand, four hundred and forty five dollars.
I'll second the motion.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. John, thanks for your work on that one. Thank you. That's a lot to evaluate.
Thank you.
Once delivery on those?
Um, I think it's thirty to sixty days is what they had mentioned.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, next beer consideration is the Intergovernmental Agreement between Delta County and San Miguel County regarding fiscal agent for the Homeland Security Grant. Chris Stewart is here to provide additional detail.
Morning, Chris. Morning, Commissioner and Robbie. Thank you. Um, so before you today, the IGA, so I think I mentioned this at our work session that we had on emergency management a couple of weeks ago. We have the State Homeland Security Grant, which started after two thousand and one, so early two thousands. I don't remember the exact year that it started. Back then, the region, there's nine all hazard regions, the west region, Delta Montrose, Gunnison, New Ray, Hinsdale and San Miguel County are the west all hazard region. For that region, San Miguel County is our fiscal agent. Back when the grant started, we got a couple of million dollars a year. We're down to roughly two hundred, two hundred and ten thousand dollars a year is all we get for a region now. It's been a very informal process since Sam Miguel took over as fiscal agent. I've been in OEM for six years and they've been the fiscal agent for all, I think, all those six years and I think at least eight years going back. And it's always just been an informal process, but their administration is now because of the uncertainty with federal grants, with FEMA and the calls from the presidential administration to gut, destroy, close FEMA, we don't know if grants like this are going to continue or not. There's a lot of uncertainty around this grant, so this could all be for nothing, but in order to expend the funds, we have three years of open funds on this grant. So in order for any agency to expend funds, Sam Miguel's requesting an IGA between the agencies in San Miguel County. Um, we have twenty one, twenty two, and twenty twenty, twenty one ends in May and then each year goes after that. We've had about three hours of meetings in the last week on this grant. We've had about three hours of meetings in the last week on this grant. Um, and San Miguel County's administrator did say that if we, um, agreed to this and there is a clause in section six, I did run this by John in his office. Um, that if. FEMA or the state, uh, how this grant works is. Sam Miguel pays everything, they turn in reimbursement requests to the state, the state pays them. FEMA reimburses the state, so if the FEMA doesn't reimburse the state. Uh, the state has said that they will seek every single penny that has been expended on this grant and will be due back to the state. Um, and San Miguel just added a clause in here that if they're not. If that money doesn't come through to reimburse them, that if anything they buy on our behalf, we would be responsible for. Um. The challenge with that is obviously this is a grant, it's a hundred percent funding, there's no match, so there's no. Budget, because if you budget for something in place for a grant, that's supplanting the federal grant rules, so. Uh, that's where we have to make a decision of, do we want to go for some of those projects or not going forward?
Mr. Bear, so you turned your microphone on?
Well, it's accurate that, uh. Chris Stewart and I spoke about this, but, but yes, this is, this, the board really needs to be very. Aware and conscious of. This requirement, there is a local county in this region that is currently out.
A lot. Two million dollars?
Two million dollars or something, something crazy, that they're going to litigation to try to. Um, um, recoup money that they spent. Um, and so this is a concern, I mean, the real concern.
It's a concern for me because they've contacted me, asking what I can do to help them, and I don't have it.
You're saying that other county, yeah?
Yeah, right, so.
The, the only difference there is that's on sponsoring in, uh, employees to respond to incidents. And expending money to manage incidents, this is a, um. Homeland Security Grant that buys goods, uh, products.
So Chris, I mean. What's, what is the typical turnaround or reimbursement, is there any way to? Go with this and then maybe spend a little bit of money and see if it gets reimbursed or. Uh, to see whether the process is going to work, or these grants are just going to be frozen?
I wish I had the crystal ball and that, that we all keep discussing, so. The twenty twenty-one grant, like I said, expires in May, we have forty-four hundred dollars, um. Earmark in that, um, actually correction, um. We had bought a subscription for an evacuation management software. Um, because the grant, we had, we're going to get the hardware to do grant IDs for evacuees and. Um, scanners to check them in and stuff, uh, that's about twenty-three hundred dollars worth of equipment. And I went ahead and purchased the software that's required to run that, thinking we were going to get this, and then they. Put out a freeze, so. That could be an easy, uh, test of the grant of. Two thousand dollars isn't, I don't think, going to break the counting, we could send that in and typically it's about a thirty-day turnaround that Sam Miguel gets their money back. Um, the. Urban Area Security Initiative, which is Denver, is on this and they get a couple of million dollars a year, they're still spending like crazy. Uh, the other central regions still spending all these big regions to have full-time staff. Um, we're the only reason that's being hesitant of saying, hey, do we, do we want to proceed with this or not, so. Um, I think by signing the agreement, it doesn't mean that we have to spend money, it just, it opens. It, it solidifies an agreement between us and San Miguel County that if we want to proceed, we have that understanding in place between the two.
Chris, how do we manage the risk of? Spending money without repayment in this program? We get an incident. Is there pre-qualification for any of these, these FEMA dollars? How do we manage this risk to the county?
So that's two separate things, this is strictly, uh, the Homeland Security Grant strictly for products and services, so we've. Hired training, brought in regional trainings and stuff to the region with this before, or, um, so. The products that we currently have in twenty-one through twenty twenty-four grants, because we have three years to spend the money. On this grant, once it's allocated. So we're closing out twenty-one, and the twenty twenty-two grant is the access control that I talked about at the work session where we're trying to. We have fit, that's the biggest thing, we have fifty-one thousand dollars earmarked to the Delta County for access control. Um. So that's where we would have to make a decision, but as far as response, if we had a fire or anything, that's completely separate from this.
What is our partnership with this county, why are they reaching out to us instead of somebody else, do you? Have a history there with them, or?
With San Miguel County, um, San Miguel stepped up, um, this, this grant requires a. Um, fiscal agent to receive the money on behalf of the region. Um, before Gunnison, it was, or begin, before San Miguel County, it was Gunnison, and I think at one point, years ago, it was Delta County. Um, San Miguel County just, um, has a little bit higher tax base and money rev- revolving through, and they took on. Like I said, eight to ten years ago, they took on the lead of being the fiscal agent, so we're bound by, um, their purchasing policy and stuff. Per federal guidelines, so like if we move forward with the access control, we have, I have to follow their procurement guide, their. RFP standard is not ours because it's. There, and they make the purchase for us, and then they just ship the stuff to us and coordinate everything. And this is just their way of, like I said, we've been doing it very informal handshake, and then they're, now their administration's wanting something more formal.
And in that. Role reversal and, um, scenario there, they'll follow our purchasing guidelines.
What's that, sir?
They will follow our purchasing guidelines if they want to, here, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
Ours are more stringent than. Um. It, there's some aspects of theirs that are more stringent than ours, so we always go with the more, more stringent requirement from the county, so.
We have lower levels for approval.
Yeah.
Than San Miguel.
Yeah.
Robbie, what do you think here?
Well, it's, it's been logical that we've had this partnership, again, it's rotated around, um, between the six counties. Uh, but San Miguel has stepped up, I understand why they're asking for this at this time. With the uncertainty.
Is there a term on this agreement, or is it just an open-ended term? Seeing.
I believe it's just open until either party, um, provides a notice of termination.
Other questions?
Well, I move that we approve the intergovernmental agreement between San Miguel County and Delta County regarding. Fiscal agent for State Homeland Security Grant and authorize the chair to sign.
I will second the motion.
Any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Um. If you don't mind this, Robbie, I'm going to. Jump ahead in our agenda here. Chris, we're going to take a quick break and do some recognitions here. One of the great things, um, we're able to do is recognize, uh. People who've worked with Delta County so long. People really put their heart and soul into their work around here, and it shows, and I really appreciate what you guys do. Um, I'm going to ask Aaron Carney, Anne Espinoza, Terry Baker, and Annie Gayos to join us up here. Just so you know, Aaron Carney in our assessor's office is Delta County for ten years. And Espinoza, uh, with Human Services has been here also ten years. Terry Baker, uh, road and bridge number four has been here twenty years. Twenty-three years?
No, road and bridge three.
Road and Bridge three, it says four here. You got promoted. Annie has been here also twenty years, now Director of Human Services, these folks have really, um, set the standard for all of us, and I appreciate your work, so. Aaron?
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay, you guys step over here for a picture?
Thank you.
Ready? One, two. Well, thank you. And you guys are all welcome to stick around, you don't have to leave. Much fun as it can be.
Not at one, except for the upper here. And these are all bosses here, so pay attention if. My lights on this video.
So back on our regular agenda, line item four, Ms. Robbie?
Okay, again, next, uh, consideration of the request from Colorado Division of Fire Prevention and Control to have Delta County enroll an incident qualification system. To track employees' credentials and time in response to wildfires and authorize emergency management to manage the system. Chris, as well.
So I've got several things on the agenda for you today.
Um, I hope the, these are easier than the first one.
Um, so the Division of Fire Prevention and Control came to a regional emergency management meeting a couple of weeks ago, and the Deputy District Chief and Battalion Chief. Uh, made the request to all the emergency managers that we needed to be entering staff, uh, especially road and bridge, people that would be. Involved in the suppression of wildfires in the incident qualification system, it's a. Federal system, that each state has their own system. And Division of Fire Prevention and Control being the state fire agency administers that system. Um, I had not. We had not previously been in the system or anything because I thought it was just a strictly firefighter qualification system. And they said, no, they're trying to expand it out to get reimbursement and people assigned to local wildfires. Especially with what's going on at the federal level, and I don't know how many, how much federal support from BLM. And Forest Service they're going to have this year and going forward. So the, the point of this is, um, what we ran into, if you remember last year with the current creek fire, is. Um, because that fire, um, was to make sure private and BLM, and we had the BLM. Helping manage that fire as well as the type-three incident commander from US Forest Service. Nobody was allowed, once the feds are involved, no one's allowed onto that fire unless they meet basic qualifications. Um, and road and bridge, they were wanting copies of certifications and stuff before they would allow dozer operators onsite. Obviously, we don't have those just at hand, and that's the purpose of the IQS system, is we get people in the off-season. Trained up their calls entered into that system, and they can just pull up their name and say, all right, yes. Dozer operator, water tank driver, whoever, you know, meets the minimum qualifications. Uh, to be on the fire, and what these qualifications are, there is the FEMA Incident Command System one hundred, two hundred, seven hundred. Um, so that someone that's working out on the fire understands what incident command system is, that they have a supervisor and how to work a radio. What that chain of command is, uh, also S one thirty, S one ninety, which are basic wildland fire, um. Terminologies, how fire spreads, um. How aircraft, everything, how the wildland fire team operates to keep those. Safe, we don't want to send someone out, especially on a dozer on a fire line, and they not know how fire works and. Everyone else is evacuating and they don't know what that means, and they just keep working and get trapped. Um, so we, um, Scott came to that meeting with the FPC, um, we want to get, uh, as many road and bridge people in there as possible, as well as other. Uh, the request from the SPC is to actually start working towards. Anybody that would be involved in that suppression of the fire, whether that's administration, obviously, emergency management. Um, so that, because every, if we have a fire, uh, in county, obviously, we typically broker a cost share. Agreement with DFPC or feds, whoever it may be. Um, this enables us to assign personnel to a fire, and then it. Tracks qualification in an hourly rate for those people based on their qualifications and experience. And that can come off of our cost share, whereas if we don't have people in the system. Yes, we're paying our people to be out there on the fire, but it doesn't count toward our cost share, so this can help reduce our bill as a county. And it meets the qualification, so we're not. Turning, getting people turned away at a fire line, and we need people up there working. Um.
What kind of, I mean, how often do you have to update these qualifications?
I believe annually, so it would be a rolling thing where Mindy and I in emergency management would administer a system, and then. Either Scott or Diane would go in and put their stuff in for road and bridge employees.
And is there a cost to the county for being part of this IQS web?
No, that, not that they've advised us, it's strictly a, um. Software system for tracking, uploading credentials, um, the cost would be training, but, uh, DFPC does offer. The FEMA classes are all online free, uh, it's the staff time and taking them because it is. About two days of sitting on a computer, very dry content, but, um. We just need to schedule those road and bridge operators to come in, take the training, take the online tests. The S one thirty, S one ninety, same thing, it can either be taught in person, which is a two hundred fifty-five dollar per person bill, or. It's available free, self-paced, online, and then DFPC will come down and do an eight-hour safety briefing with them. For free, so there's multiple avenues, but.
Is there? The eight-hour time block is, is concerning for road and bridge. Is there any? Wiggle room there? I mean, you're asking a lot of the guys to sit for eight hours for.
They, they can take it over, uh, it's not like a timed course or anything, you can work through it, so if they wanted to do. Two hours and then come back, or four hours one day and come back, it'll save your progress and you can pick up there, it's not a. You have to sit for eight hours and finish it, and then some, some people it may take longer, some people may be able to get through it. There's, those FEMA classes are, they're self-paced, but.
Right.
You can't just sit there and click through them, you have to watch the video, read the stuff before you can click on the button, so.
Yeah, okay.
It, the, the biggest hurdle is going to be getting the initial training because some of these guys don't have any of it, but once they're done. Then there'll be a refresher for the S one thirty, S one ninety. Um, I don't know if it's every year or every other year, so.
Is the initial longer than the eight hours, or?
Yeah, the initials, all the FEMA classes and then the, um, S one thirty, S one ninety, which. If you do that in person, it's forty hours, but I think I did that class online and about eight hours too. It's, depends on how. Much you want to sit there and stare at the computer. And we don't have to run every road and bridge employee through it, we talked about just identifying key. Uh, equipment operators and stuff.
So we have John and Dave and Scott in the room, you guys have input here? Remember, you're on the record.
Thought you were in the meeting.
Um, yeah, the only concern I had was the eight-hours stream, um, that's not. That's not feasible for us, but we'd have to break it up.
And not all the employees would want to do something like this, that'd be kind of voluntary on their part? If those are the ones that we select, you selected.
Right.
Yeah.
The goal of this is. Flattable, getting good qualified people up there and then being, and able to get reimbursed for fighting fires. Uh, certainly, not fire is the biggest risk we have in this, the biggest hazard we have in the county. I pretty, set a pretty high bar on training. When I keep hearing from you, it can be done so much quicker and so much more efficiently.
Um, well. Thankfully, the local battalion chief and district chief are willing to work with us on this, and they're not. Saying you have to hire somebody to come in and do it, they're, I think that's the benefit of our local DFPC shop is there. Um, but, um, this is the fact that we haven't been requiring some of this, most counties have a directive that. When an employee is hired to complete this. that when an employee is hired, they complete this within 30 days, 60 days of hiring. So we haven't been doing that. So that's a discussion that we need to have with HR. And then as they come on board, it's just completed, and then it's not a big of an issue once they're out on the road and stuff, but that's another policy discussion that we need to have. And ultimately, they would like to see it go out, include GIS.
I'm sure they would.
Everybody, anybody that can be involved with doing fires for, involved in a manpower fire.
But if we got a fire raging, and we got somebody from Road and Bridge bringing a water truck up that doesn't have the certification, turning them away makes no sense either.
On the signature page, so the county sheriff is the only one that has to sign from the county?
So there's, the request was two different things.
Sheriff, you're here if you want to speak on your side.
The request was to have, they typically create two systems for counties, one for regular county employees and one side for county employees. I spoke with sheriff about this for sheriff's office employees, and he does not want to have the sheriff's office have a, an account on it, so I'll let him speak to that.
Morning.
Good morning. Thanks, Commissioner, for recognizing that. Yeah, so I've had discussions with Chris about, about signing this, and I've basically opted out of it, basically for the same reason that, that the commissioners are concerned about the amount of training. My staff has a, has a difficult time as it is just trying to keep up with post-training and any other specialized training that, that is required for my staff. The equipment that is also in this agreement, there is a cost to that, a pretty heavy cost for fire suits, fire bags, fireproof tents. You know, we just, we just don't have any more room for a big bag of fire stuff that may sit in there for, for decades without anybody using. I gave the example to Chris that prior OEM years ago had a grant for those fire bags and they were about like this, where they had the tent inside. They had the yellow flameproof shirts and some other gear, pants, boots. And those things just collected dust in our, in our vehicles for years and years and years. I don't think anybody had ever used them.
Thankfully.
What's thankfully, yes. My staff for wildfire is just limited, limited use as far as, you know, the initial call for a fire, if there's an evacuation, they would be up there notifying residents of evacuation, manning crossroads, exit routes, that kind of thing. You know, my staff definitely doesn't need to be trained in fighting wildfires.
Chris, what happens if county opts out?
I think it's just business as usual. I don't think there's any penalty other than not being able to apply some of the staff's time for cost match and that qualifications. And they, if someone's, if a Road and Bridge employee, like they request a dozer, if we can't provide proof that we have people to meet the minimum qualifications, they will turn down county support, and we will have to pay to bring in equipment from another county at our cost. So that could mean trucking in a dozer from Utah, Arizona, Durango, Cortez, and we have to pay mileage and time for that entire trip. So that's the.
It may not be the cost, but the time.
So it's.
You all rec- recognize Road and Bridge last year for their jumping on the fire quickly, and certainly all those involved did the same, so.
Chris, on the first paragraph of this, the dates are wrong.
And I realized that after I uploaded it, that they had given me a copy that's 2025, but the one that was on their website that I downloaded to provide the Terry is the 2024 version. So I have the 2025 in hard copy. And if you guys would like to have more discussion with DFPC, I could arrange work session or at the next meeting I have, just deputy district chief Odom or battalion chief Dolan's incoming present, because they're the experts on this.
So this is a one-year term on this contract?
Yeah, it looks like we have to re-accept the terms and conditions each year.
It might be worth, because, because of the potential risk of not doing this to the county and its citizens, to do this for one year and analyze the burden of the training on us and see how many Road and Bridge operators would like to sign up. And let the sheriff and his department watch and see if that makes any sense a year from now.
So I would, I think that's, that's the way to approach this. I think that I can, I can understand what sheriff's talking about as far as, you know, his, his people are going to be involved regardless. And so the, the additional layer of, of training to get them actually into the firefighting mode is, is above and beyond, I think, what they're able to physically accomplish. But to have the Road and Bridge people on board, because they're also going to be involved anyways, and to take this on a yearly basis and to see where we're at in a year, and hopefully we have no fires. We don't have to test it, but if it gets tested, then next year we might have to just re-look at it and revisit it and see how it worked. But I like the idea that it's for a year, and we can revisit this at the end of the year and see how it all played out, how many people got involved, how many Road and Bridge people got the training that was required, and how that's all playing out, so.
So who will sign this document?
There's a line asking for the chief executive, so it would be the chair.
The will of the board here.
I'll make a motion that we approve the consideration. Request from the Colorado Division of Fire Prevention and Control to have Delta County enroll in the incident qualification system to track employees' credentials in time in response to wildfire fires and authorize emergency management to manage the system and authorize chair to sign.
I'll second that.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, sir. Sheriff, don't wander off.
Nick for consideration and discussion, resolution opposing Colorado Senate Bill 2025-3.
Uh, this is something that was brought to our attention. It's gained a lot of media attention here. I don't know if everybody realizes, but last Thursday, Governor Polis signed Senate Bill 25003 into law, limiting, limiting manufacturing, distributing, transferring, selling, purchasing certain semi-automatic rifles or shotguns that have a detachable magazine. Many of us feel this is a huge incursion into our Second Amendment rights. And as rural Colorado, we feel, I feel this is unacceptable. Sheriff Taylor brought a resolution to my attention. We've adapted it to Delta County. Thank, thank you for doing that, Sheriff. Because this was brought to us prior to governor's signing, on the last two paragraphs of this resolution, there are some amendments we have to make indicating that time is past. Like to open up discussion with these, with the two commissioners here and see where you two gentlemen are at.
Well, like, like you said, it's, it's a resolution, or it's a law that's been passed and signed by our, our governor, and so at this point, it's kind of like water under the bridge, but I think it's more of a statement that we make that we stand against this. And with, he was presented with 40,000-plus signatures asking him not to sign, and he just chose to disregard those as well. So I think this is a statement that we stand solidly with those who are opposition to this bill, even though the bill itself is already been inked and is on its way. So I think it's important that we take a stand and show that we are against this, even though it's water under the bridge at this point.
Show of standing.
Yes, I agree also. And in March of 2019, the Board of Delta County approved a resolution designated Delta County as a Second Amendment county, and that is on our record, and we have the history of always supporting the Second Amendment in Delta County and the right to people to keep and bear arms. This just kind of takes some of that away, but yes, I think this needs to be approved and signed and delivered.
Sheriff, do you have anything you'd like to share with us?
I, I completely agree with, with everything that's been said on the board. You know, I appreciate those statements. I've, I've had a lot of constituents call, several, several of them called in the last few weeks concerning about this, and, and that's why I brought it to Commissioner Coons's attention. Early on, I think there was just two or three counties that were adopting resolutions like this. And I think now there's, there's several across the state that have, that have done it. And so I, I think it's, I agree with Commissioner Fuller that this is, this is a statement that we need to make at his Delta County, that we are against that, and we are pro Second Amendment.
Sheriff, if this becomes in full force and effect, what impact will that have on your budget and your staff?
Um, you know, I, I'm not sure at this point. From what I'm gathering with the legislation, it's, it's right now, the way I understand it is the sheriff would just authorize, do a background check, authorize citizens to have the ability to, to go to CPW to take the, the training to get their firearm safety card and then a hunter's education. I think we have to look at it a little closer and, and see exactly what the ask is going to be for the sheriff. From, from what I gather, that's, that's the ask from the sheriff is, is just that, which, which puts sheriffs in a bad spot in, anyway, making those decisions, whether, whether one person has the ability to even proceed by, by a handgun or a firearm, and, and then the next person can't. So it's, it, it puts us in a bad spot to make those decisions.
Yes, the death. Continuation of the front range nonsense. It's just being forced upon the whole state, so.
Would you like us to amend, to remove the specific language regarding the veto?
Yeah, I've got two edits there.
Okay.
Whereas with the edit, can you read my language?
Yeah. Whereas Governor Jared Polis signed Senate Bill 2025-003 into law on April 10th, 2025, knowing this legislation will infringe on Colorado's Second Amendment rights, jeopardize citizens' right to self-defense, damage the economy and livelihoods of gun store owners and employees, and burden county sheriffs. Now therefore be resolved by the Board of County Commissioners of Delta County, Colorado, that this board hereby declares opposition to Senate Bill 2025-003.
Any other edits, gentlemen?
I'll make a motion, thank you, that we adopt Resolution Number 2025-R.
12?
12. Resolution opposing Colorado Senate Bill 2025-3.
I second that.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, Sheriff.
Thank you.
Okay, continuing with Chris then, Florida County Commissioners acting as Delta County 911 Emergency Telephone Service Authority in consideration of informal complaint letter to Colorado Public Utility Commission on behalf of Delta County 911 regarding CenturyLink as Colorado Basic Emergency Telephone Service Provider and voiceover IP 911 routing issues to Delta County 911 between June 24th and March 25th.
Don't nail here, Chris.
Well, remember back at the work session, we had 911 and emergency management. We brought up the issue that between March, or June of last year and March of this year, at that point, when we had the work session, this was still an ongoing issue. CenturyLink cannot identify an issue. They have since basically voiceover IP customers in Delta that had charter, were not able to reach our 911 center when they were calling. It was, and they give them a busy signal, the phone would ring continuously for over a minute, and then it would route to Wesco, which is the Montrose Dispatch Center. 297 calls between June of 2025, 2025 did that, where they would timeout, enroll to Wesco. And the other, the, the issue with that wasn't just the calls went to Wesco, it was the 911 Ezinet was not, and how the system was working would not. Typically, Wesco, when they get a 911 call from us, just puts in a code, sends it right back to Delta. Well, it wouldn't ring back to Delta. It would hit our system, ring for another minute on their end, and then ring back into their center. So they had two dispatchers on the same call. And typically, these are happening when they have stuff going on. So we were tying up two dispatchers in Montrose for a call on Delta, and it was leading to several minutes delay, because then they had to take all the information, put it into their CAD system, and then pick up the phone and call our dispatch or relay everything via radio, so we could page an ambulance or fire or whatever we needed to do here at our dispatch center. So it led to a delay of service for our citizens here in Delta County. CenturyLink is the only 911 provider in the state of Colorado. They're the BESP. And we had, as this letter outlines, have been working with them. Montrose was the lead because they could see all the data. They had the stats. They had the tickets open. We couldn't see anything. Finally, and we've been asking, hey, on calls, there's a monthly call, and we kept asking, can we just have a conference call between Motorola, which is the software provider for the server, the software that we answer 911s on in dispatch, Lumen CenturyLink, because CenturyLink's parent company is Lumen, so they're one and the same. And then Trotto, which is the master, like phone database, they're the ones that route phone numbers and where calls need to go on the 911 network. Those three have to work together to identify issues. And we said, can we? They were working in silos at that point, and we kept saying, can we work together? Because you're working in silos, and they just kept ignoring us, ignoring us, ignoring us. Our local technician informed us that he had to go outside his scope of authority and behind, supplement his normal processes to get to the highest level of authority, technical, technical support within CenturyLink before a senior tech person finally went, hey, why don't we have a conference call with Motorola and Trotto and figure this thing out? And they scheduled that one day later, and they fixed it because it was a firewall issue where Motorola had programmed the firewall when they upgraded our system last year for $300,000, programmed the firewall wrong. So it was blocking all these calls. So we don't know for how long this firewall had been blocking calls. And then what we discussed was that it's unacceptable that Lumen CenturyLink took eight months to have a conference call to identify a firewall issue, and they could have fixed it in June of last year.
So this letter, going to the PUC to document all this, is there any other actions that'll come out of that?
So the direction was to perform, prepare an informal complaint, which what this is. So there's two options. There's only an informal complaint and a formal complaint. A formal complaint would require either John and his office or the county to contract with another attorney to basically file an administrative lawsuit with the PUC. So go an informal route. We submit this. The PUC reviews it, makes sure it's, meets their criteria. It is something to do with the 911 network, which I'm confident that it will be. Then they reach out to CenturyLink and say, Then they reach out to CenturyLink and say, you have thirty days to respond, explain to this commission why you took eight months to address this issue and two hundred and ninety seven calls. And they have to explain themselves to the PUC, and the PUC can't explain, uh enforce things on there. Um at the end is where I ask for remedies. They have the ability to award service re- uh refund service fees to the county. And they can also put other um stipulations on CenturyLink. I don't know if they will or not, but we can ask for it. So hopefully open a dialogue with CenturyLink and say this is unacceptable. Um you need to do better. And then if this issue has been resolved, thankfully after that, they fix that, and we left the ticket open for two weeks and they resolved it. But who knows, we could be in the same boat the next time something comes up. Um this is Sierra and I are on calls with CenturyLink at least once a month, and this is a common theme across the state of nine one one centers beating their heads against the wall because CenturyLink doesn't care most of the time. They refuse to fix stuff.
Sheriff, what do you think on this one?
You know, it's a it's a problem that that was identified, and you know, I need to give kudos to Chris for digging into this and really understanding the the nuts and bolts of this problem. We're lucky to have Chris and and the ability to to really understand what's going on in the deepest levels, as you can see with that document that Chris put together.
A lot of detail here.
Lot of detail.
Yeah, very well, well-written letter, too. It lays it all out.
So I'm, and I agree with Chris that I'm I'm confident when uh the, is it the PUC? Uh when that board reads that, that they're gonna see, yeah, there's definitely a problem in in Delta County, and and it might even help the rest of the state and rest of the dispatch centers, you know, open some eyes and try to get this thing resolved.
Chris, do you know of other counties are writing similar letters? Would that be of assistance if if it was more of a barrage instead of isolated?
Um they typically like to look at, talking with Jennifer Kirkland, who's a PUC rep for nine one one, that they like to look at individual things, um because it has to me, they have to look at outages and determine if it is truly an outage, if it's on the nine one one network. Uh there are different issues. I know that, as I mentioned at the work session, Larimer County, the LITA, Larimer Emergency Telephone Service Authority is, they're going a formal route. They had a different thing where CenturyLink um had told them they had diversity after the twenty thirteen floods, had filed documents that they had built redundant paths for nine one one up to SS Park. And then last year with the Cameron, um so Cameron Peak. The the fire that they had last summer up there on Highway thirty four and thirty six, where it was cutting off access to the SS Park, they found out that there was no redundant telephone lines, and if the fire would have burned the telephone poles, it would have cut off the entire SS Park Valley. So they're going the formal route, and they have a law lawyer, law firm engaged, and they are actively suing CenturyLink over that. So thankfully, I don't think we were at that point. Um this has been resolved, um but we need to have we are members of the Colorado Councils of Authority, which is similar to the CCI or the Sheriff's Association. It's the Dispatch Association for the State for Dispatch Centers, nine one one authorities. There is a meeting Thursday, and one of the topics is the ongoing issues with CenturyLink, their lack of support, lack of response to tickets, the fact that they close tickets without doing any investigation. If you read through this letter at the start, you saw how many outage notifications we were getting daily, and I was like, there's something going on in your system, and they just kept ignoring me. No, that's nothing to worry about. So their solution was just to remove me from the notifications, so I want to get the notifications.
Wow. Commissioners, other questions, comments?
I just a couple of things. First of all, thank you for sticking with this. I mean, this has been going on for months, right, for a year now, so. And and it's unacceptable. I'm going to talk a nine one one service here. This is ridiculous that you have to even go through these hoops. So thank you for doing that. And and it's troubling to hear that you're saying it's an ongoing issue with them. It's like an attitude adjustment that's needed that isn't going to come by by magic. It's going to have to be forced upon them to, they can't just continue to blow this off. So I'm I'm happy to hear that it's fixed for now, but it's concerning to me that this might be just a temporary fix, that this might be another thing that comes, keeps coming back. And so I think this letter is going to be step one in in ensuring that we're not going to this, blow this off, we're not going to just ignore this. We're going to keep the fire warm, as you so to speak, and just let them know that we're we're monitoring this. You're you're doing a great job of keeping us in the loop and keeping us informed, but this can't go on. It has to get fixed. It has to be addressed. So thank you for doing what you've done, and we stand, I stand in support of what you're doing here.
Definitely. Thank you.
Would you like to make the motion?
Well, I move that we support the informal complaint letter to the Colorado Public Utilities Commission on behalf of Delta County concerning nine one one regarding CenturyLink as a Colorado basic emergency telephone service provider and voice over IP nine one routing issues to Delta County nine one one between June twenty four and March twenty five and authorize the full board to sign the letter.
I will second that, Mark.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Thank you.
Have you got clean copy there?
Uh next, for your consideration, ratified the warrants.
Any questions on the warrants, gentlemen?
Let me get to the page. I move that we ratify the warrants per Delta County policy. Get my computer down. Ratify the warrants from the various funds paid by warrant numbers one five three nine four two through one five four two one two and ACH transaction ten twenty seven dash ten sixty from March first twenty twenty five to March thirty first twenty twenty five totaling two million, six hundred and eighty two thousand, four hundred dollars and sixty seven cents in accounts payable and one million, eight hundred and seventy four thousand, two hundred and twenty two dollars and thirty eight cents in monthly county human services and health department March twenty twenty five payroll for items budgeted and approved per Delta County policy.
I will second that motion.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Paying bills.
Okay, next then is Lindsay Mitchell, PIO, review of your county commissioner's schedule.
Thank you, Sheriff.
Good morning. We have a work session from one thirty to three thirty with here at five sixty Dodge Street. Live at this afternoon, three thirty to five, there's a border health meeting here at five sixty Dodge Street. Thursday, April seventeenth, eight thirty to ten, there's a P P C call here at five sixty Dodge Street.
Thank you, right there. Are you going to that energy symposium?
Yep.
Okay. Mike and I will be at, in right, we'll have an energy and environment symposium.
Um Mike did, I'm sorry, I didn't realize that you were going. Did you already make your?
I know, you made my. Not hotel, because that's not Spain.
I'm so sorry.
So that's sixteen seventeen.
I will get that one.
Yeah, thank you.
Go ahead.
April twenty second, ten to noon is a pretrial diversion work session here at five sixty Dodge Street. Wednesday, April twenty third, nine to one thirty, agency ballot and Mesa Board meeting at the Bay of the Brown Valley Recreation Center. Wednesday, April twenty third, three thirty to six, and uh the Fourth Annual Champions for Children's Fair. That is the, this awareness fair that is held as a human services party. Thursday, eighth twenty fourth, eight thirty to ten is an agent and sequel here at five sixty Dodge Street. Thursday, April twenty fourth, ten to eleven thirty, we're doing a human services eligibility recognition. I'll be in the road during. Friday, April twenty fifth through the twenty sixth, holiday event is uh the twenty twenty five twenty spring conference. I'll be at the Grand Junction Convention Center.
Is anybody else besides me going to that?
The Friday and Saturday?
Yeah. Mainly Saturday, Friday's exactly that.
I'm unsure at this point. We'll make a note of that.
I went ahead and we put it on public numbers in case. Monday, April twenty eighth.
Can we stay on week twenty one? On the twenty second, I have ten o'clock pretrial work session. At eleven, I have a a land use code work session. Is that correct?
That's what I'm seeing.
One hour each.
Yes.
April twenty second?
Yes.
I don't have the audio.
Pretrial and diversion work session?
It said the pretrial, but I don't have a land use code on it.
Oh. So pretrial will last from ten to eleven, land use code from eleven to noon.
Okay. It doesn't say that on it, because it just says pretrial and diversion.
Let's add that with land use code work session.
You had talked about, so it's up to you guys putting the uh natural medicine that from eleven to noon there.
Yes, that's what a land use code work session is.
Yeah. Okay.
Um April twenty eighth, quarter five thirty, one to four, board meeting here at five sixty Dodge Street. Tuesday, April twenty ninth, eight thirty to ten AM, um will be our Board of County Commissioners regular scheduled meeting at the sixty Dodge Street.
Yeah, what's on this?
No, it's going to be a regular scheduled meeting.
So it's your third
Yeah.
Tuesday, and it it is for the Adobe Buse
and Ally meetings.
And yeah, so it is a regular meeting.
Sorry, terminology. It's a special meeting.
We have this discussion.
Yeah, so.
Special meeting. We we have first and third, that's the fifth.
Right, but on the fifth, there is, you know, we do, we do have that
I thought it was
flexibility.
Optional.
For.
So do I need to put it, I'm just asking, did you put it as a special meeting or a regular meeting?
Well, I'll turn to the attorney then.
Well, it's not regularly scheduled. It's added. So is the, is there an option, sure. But I think that the system that we use is first and third. So when they add a fifth, it's a special meeting. It doesn't make any difference. It's just what you call it.
Okay, it's all a special meeting.
A lot of times you don't have one, right?
Right.
On a fifth.
Right.
We've also got a wooey work session that morning. What times are each of these?
We've had, but we, we're, this is where some confusion has come in. So we have a work session at ten.
No.
No.
Not anymore. Was he, that's, that was Sean's email. That those got, those got flipped.
Eight thirty is the work session. Ten AM is your session, right?
No, I thought it was the other way. He had it at eight thirty.
I don't know. He put, he told me he posted it at, and to have the, his regular planning time is what he indicated to me.
But ten, so he asked me, we scheduled the wooey code at eight thirty.
Right.
Which now it sounds like it's a regular meeting, so we need to reschedule that work session for another time.
Go ahead.
It's not a special meeting.
The ten o'clock on April twenty ninth is the special meeting for Alliance Ready as well as the um Adobe Buse. At eight thirty will be the work session for the wooey. That's how it should be listed on the public side and as the posting.
And that's how I have it on the agenda as well, work session, and then the regular, or the planning.
Is that still work at eight thirty then for, okay, for work session?
So you have the agenda, you have it listed as a regular?
I will change it to special.
Okay, and then on the agenda, so the agenda completely is, needs to change?
No, of the agenda, I have the work session in the morning at eight thirty, and then I have ten o'clock planned for the landfill and the
No, wait a minute.
You're going to be posted, exactly. One is posted as a work session, the other one which will
And and usually she posts those, but on the agenda, I just am clarifying that the eight thirty when the board meets, it's not the regular meeting, it is a work session. Does that make sense? Or do I just need to take the work session portion?
Okay, I'm hearing like three different things.
Well, you don't normally agendaize work sessions.
No, but because there was confusion as to whether it was starting at eight thirty, the board meeting was starting at eight thirty, because it generally does, and it's not starting until ten.
Because Sean had already posted for ten o'clock, and so we had to make the change because it, in all of the publications, it had already said ten, so we couldn't switch. So we just made this special meeting starting at ten that you will.
Eight thirty is a wooey work session.
Right.
Ten o'clock is a V O C C.
Right.
Okay, that's all that matters.
That's that's it.
Now, you had something on the twenty eighth?
One thousand. Hey, we all clear there on the twenty ninth? Lindsay, pick up with the thirtieth then.
Oh, the thirtieth, ten to two is a spring municipal quarterly meeting in PM. And that's all they have.
Okay, also on the thirtieth, at four thirty is the Highway ninety two phase one C dot um public meeting at Heritage Hall in Hotchus. At six o'clock is the Division Four Public Meeting on the Measurement Rulemaking at Bill Haddles. I suspect more than one commissioner via both of those.
That was on the the twenty ninth or was that on the?
That's thirtieth.
Thirtieth, okay.
Could you add those two to our calendar?
Can I talk to you about that after?
Sure. You bet. Gentlemen, anything else for the rest of the month? We get everything?
That's it?
Good with me.
Thank you, Lindsay. Hang on, guys, we're getting there. Uh before we go to the Delta County Library and the report on three D detention facility report, so for Monday, April seventh, twenty twenty five, Delta County Detention Facility Population Count Report, male inmates, county jail thirty two, female inmates, county jail three, male inmates, Department of Corrections, three, female inmates, Department of Corrections, one, for a total of thirty nine, the average daily inmate population the week of March thirty one through April seven was fifty point zero zero. Anything else for the regular V O C C report? Hearing none will end that. And I know we're about a half an hour behind, but I'm going to invite um library to come on up.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning, Siskas.
How things in library world?
Library world is good.
What, but you usually say library land.
I do usually say library. It's museum world. So do you guys already have the reports ready?
I have.
Great. So it's closer, so we can just talk if we need to. So just wanting to update you guys on the twenty twenty four accomplishments for the library district. We provide an annual report required by law to repry, to provide an annual report to the state library and also uh basically to report to you all as well. And so what you're seeing is just a a summary And so what you're seeing is just a summary of accomplishments. As well as some of the statistical information that we are required to supply to the state, and that's on the back page. And so again, the accomplishments on the front page is not everything that we did accomplish uh, in twenty twenty four. It's just a selected summary of some of those accomplishments. And I think that it's worth noting that are which is also represented on the backside that our trends are trending up as far as visits to the library, collection use, circulation, additional, uh, we added library card users, et cetera. So more people have library cards in their pockets and are using them and using our libraries across the board. We were also successful last year in increasing the hours at Peony and Hotchkiss libraries, which was is always a positive and good step. Based upon our community needs assessment, a couple of years ago, our strategic plan has us focusing on the community engagement workforce and skill development. That was something that we learned that our county is desperately in need of and engaging with our youth. And so that is why we're highlighting those as well as a couple of other uh, strategic areas that we're focusing on. But I think it's notable that our E L L classes are going well and increasing the number of students that are attending as well as our partnership with the school district uh, in holding adult basic education classes at the Delta Library. And then thus what results from there are the high set exams. And already, I think we're already getting close to have matched or already gone past last year's exams, the number of exams, which is a good thing. And then as far as the youth are, again, we have a partnership with the school district with the student e-cards. And this year we anticipate that number going up. And so that's across the entire district. Our, we've got a lot of positive response with our more social kinds of activities with youth, which is also a positive approach to socializing youth in this, at the same time. We're kind of developing some of those skills. They don't know it. They're having fun while they're developing those skills, which is always a good thing. And so our Lego clubs, uh, et cetera, and writing clubs, book clubs, et cetera. The, as far as our youth materials, one of the things that we have received through grants is what what's called wonder books or box books. And those are for more early literacy and early grade levels. And what it is, is just a, it's just a picture book with the audio accompaniment. So you can, you can turn on the audio and as the child is reading through the book, they can read along. And it it provides background um, sounds as well, not just reading the text. But those are two different kinds, and those are very popular. And and I'm gonna segue into something new this year is is our learning kits that we've also received through a grant. And those will be take home kits with all sorts of activities for all age groups, not just kids, for us adults too. And then um, on the backside, in just focusing on obviously, it shows the revenue and expenses from twenty twenty four. But I also just highlighted some of the key statistics for last year, again, an increase in the number of people who have library cards and an increase in the of the number of people visiting our libraries on a daily basis. And yes, those are repeat numbers. If you're looking at the hundred and fifty two thousand, that's we have door counts every day. So what this really says is just how busy we are. And we can track, obviously, we track it on a daily basis. The number of checkouts and renewals went up as well. Our computer use has gone up. So our public computers and that also consists of our, the collection checkouts for our Chromebooks and hotspots is represented in the checkout numbers. The public computers are our standalone uh, computers at each of our libraries. Our Wi-Fi sessions did go down and in representing that of, if you're aware, each of our library has the ability for patrons to sit outside, not so that they have access to Wi-Fi twenty four seven. And this, and we, we have to track this number. Why it went down is with our Maraki system in just calculating the sessions. The state requires different um, metrics, and this is tracking the sessions. And what we've found in twenty twenty four is that we were doing a better job of tracking the the right um, data. And so I don't think that we will see that go down in twenty twenty five. This was just a correct, kind of a metric correction that we saw in twenty twenty four. We certainly do see a number of people sitting outside our libraries in their vehicles or just sitting on the grounds of the facilities and using our Wi-Fi. And that's, that's important for us to offer that service. The other piece is the number of items that go outside of our library district that is lent to others within the consortium that we belong to, which is the Marmot Consortium. And we're about thirty seven libraries across the state, so our materials are showing up all over the state um, as they are lent out. And then in the same way, our patrons are borrowing materials from Marmot Consortium libraries. And the Marmot libraries consist not only of other public libraries like us, but they also consist of academic libraries. And so that's useful, especially for students uh, and those that are, that are more interested in some of those kinds of materials. And then finally, on the uh, programming, we increased, offered more programs than we did in twenty twenty three, and as a result, we saw more attendance. Our summer reading program last year uh, hit a record of of registrations, and we're hoping to surpass that this year. So hopefully that's a goal that we can meet. So we had a good, a good summer reading program. And again, all in all, we had a great year last year.
Thank you. Questions?
I'm on, I'm on page one here. I'm looking at your community engagement youth section. And I'm looking at all those clubs you have, writing clubs, book clubs, video game tournaments and stuff. Does all those numbers track up as well?
Yes.
Track those numbers?
Yes. So those numbers, what you're seeing there are programs. So if you're looking over on the backside where it tracked the total number of programs, those would be listed and the attendance in those programs. Yes.
So another question, you said you got Lego clubs. Do you guys check out Legos or the kids have to bring their own Legos?
No, we don't check out Legos. The kids come to the library. So we have a collection of Legos and it stays in the libraries.
I see.
And so, yeah.
Good. Yeah, I'm all about keeping kids off screen, so good job.
Yeah, thank you.
I see you have the thirty high set exam, the high school equivalency.
Yes.
You might have touched on this. Is there a variation in the age of the people coming in for their high school equivalency?
Um, I am, we are not specifically, nor do we have to track their age, so I can't answer that. Um, what, we do see a variation with younger adults. Um, but we, we are also known to have older adults as well that are coming in to, to finally get their high school equivalency. So typically, we see younger um, twenties, thirties, but we do, I I'm guessing because we, again, we don't track it, but every once in a while, we do see uh, older adults that
And great.
That is something that they want to accomplish and to get their high school equivalency, and we accommodate that.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you.
I had a couple of questions. Last year, you brought forward a take home healthcare briefcase or something?
Telehealth kit.
That's it. Is it being used?
No, not really, which is a disappointment. That grant was um, we part, we were part of the pilot program across the state that was implemented by Governor Polis's or the Lieutenant Governor, um, Office of Economic and Telehealth, something, 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 acronyms. And so we did, um, we partnered with have and continue to partner with Delta Health, which was important as well as Tri-County, as well as our health department, et cetera, in getting the, the word out about the telehealth kit. And it has checked out, but not anywhere to what we thought or what we had hoped. Um, and again.
Any thought about donating that to a different organization may? Cause they, didn't you have five or six of them?
You, you mean as far as donating the kids?
Equipment if you're not using it.
So what we're doing is we, yeah, I mean, we're, we're redistributing within our system, especially the Chromebooks, the hotspots. But we are still keeping at least one on site for each library. It's not that they don't check out. They're just not checking out at the rate that we had wanted or expected. So I should say that. We had two kits at each library, and we've now pulled to just where we're, we've just got one cat, one kit at each library.
Um, another question, this may maybe for Esther. Uh, between for twenty twenty four, between total revenue and expenditures, there's a delta of about two hundred and thirteen thousand dollars. So in surplus. Has that money been earmarked for anything?
We do have to um, keep by law a certain amount of reserve money. And so part of that is that. And um, we do have capital needs of paying in Crawford libraries where some of that money gets utilized.
Uh, last question in for anybody here that says at the new Delta Library, the county and the city and and library put a lot of time and effort into the maker space. What's going on there?
So that, as far as as that, that does, that's not something that is reported to the state library because of our partnership. In other words, the programming that we do is there.
I understand.
So right now, um, we are obviously, from the library side, we are offering programs. Our responsibility in that, in the partnership with the city is with, while the city is fulfilling the Oetic Grant, the E D A grant, then the library district is offering programs, and we're focused on family and kids. That's our responsibility. So maker programs that are going on um, in the maker space are the programming that we are providing is focused on kids. Now, as far as where we are, as far as the, the different pods, so audio visual is set up. We've got three D printers. We've got sewing. And we just um, are establishing the wood shop as well as there's other tech related gear that is there. And so from the uh, innovation workspace side and the E D A grant, uh, they, we are responsible through that grant to incubate through at least three businesses. And we started off with seven, and we they, we are continuing to incubate through uh, businesses at this point. So it's going well. And as far as um, equipment and the maker space pods being established, it's a slow process. And right now, we're working on the wood shop. Equipment is coming in. Uh, we were able to actually recently purchase an entire wood professional wood shop from a gentleman who had retired out of Cedar Ridge. So it's, it's getting set up and as we continue to move through. Our advisory group uh, are very active as far as providing oversight and help in each of those pods with their areas of expertise. So in other words, we have an expert in the audio visual pod. We also have one now established for the wood shop as that comes in. We've got technology.
Did D C I move into the that area?
I'm sorry.
Didn't the D C I move out of their old offices into that area?
So you're, you're talking about the coworking space, which I hadn't mentioned yet, but thank you. That is completely those, those um, businesses, or I should say those office spaces inside coworking part of it are completely rented.
Okay.
And D C I did move into that.
Other questions?
I have none.
Thank you all for being here. Appreciate it.
Can I say one more thing, please?
Sure.
Um, I just wanted to bring to your attention at the very end, where it said notable awards on the front of the LaDonna and her staff were acknowledged at the Colorado Library Association Annual Meeting for the um, Innovative Spaces Award this year. So I just wanted to shout out to her, her staff for getting that.
Yeah.
And then also I would encourage you, if you don't, I know you're still very busy, but uh, come to the library and check out a book. Have a visit with our librarians. Uh, The Great Alone is a great read. I just would say that. And then also a shout out for our new summer reading program, which is going to be Color Our World. And in that thing, happy Easter. Thank you all for your support.
Well, thank you.
To that, Delta County Reads, we're in the middle of our Delta County Reads right now. Stuart Little, so movie showing Paradise at Grand Mesa Arts and Events Center and at the Egyptian will be coming soon. So in order to get a free ticket, you have to read Stuart Little.
So Esther, are you gonna hide those? We need to close our eyes where you.
Thank you.
I hope that you give you a minute.
Thank you. Thank you.
Um, while we reset for uh, human services, we're gonna take a three and a half minute break back here at twenty after. Thank you for your patience. Well, we're gonna come back into session, um, human services with Annie Gallegos and her team. Good morning.
Um, so we will start off the agenda as usual with the financials and Nicole.
Um, so for the payables report, the only thing uh, that's kind of not normal is the project one twenty seven forty thousand, which is a grant that any applied and received, uh, the Family Voice Grant. And that is going towards um, recruitment for foster homes in Delta County as well as an online portal that Foster C P A, um, certified foster homes and our department can use to um, find resources within the community. Um, if a certain home or certain family needs something, we can put it kind of like Facebook Marketplace. Where this is what we needed, and people can be called to answer that or donate funds to find those things. So we get a two year, um, I believe, contract with that.
Great. And with that also, we um, because that grant was obtained uh, through Montrose and Delta Counties, because we share a lot of the same homes. They'll actually be also serving the homes in Montrose County as well, too.
Did Montrose get a similar grant?
We went in on the grant together. So we're the fiscal agent, but we have money for for both counties. And so um, uh, both counties entered into that part of it.
Are there any questions on the payables report?
So it's an action item, isn't it? Except the payables.
You just signed.
Good.
Um, as for the budget, we should be at about sixteen point six seven percent. We are fifteen point eight. Um, Tatiana and I are reminded, we heard the law of uh, oh, we can save money this way. So they're probably a little annoyed with us. Uh, we figure the more preventive cost savings we can do, they'll be good for us. Are there any questions on the statement or where we are within the budget?
With the recent budget cuts announced, at least ten percent on all departments. Where are you seeing your biggest risk at financially?
I think our biggest risk is always gonna be child welfare, um, because that is a place where we always overspend just because in that allocation, that requires all salaries and all placement costs at the same time. And so those, you can be fully staffed, but when placement costs continue to rise and the amount of youth. and the amount of youth that are coming into placement and some are more expensive placements, all of those are lumped together. And so, they were predicting a $3.4 million cut to our core funding, um, but the JBC denied that piece of it. So, we won't see that cut, which we're happy to see. Um, we are gonna see the increases for the support for C cap, uh, which is important. And then there was a little bit of, um, a support through HICPuff for our county admin. So, we have seen, um, we haven't seen as drastic as cuts that maybe others have seen or other departments have seen because we've had some really strong advocates out there advocating for these things because the, the cost isn't gonna go away, it's gonna continue to increase. So, and we, we need to provide that care, there's not really a choice to not provide care.
We've also gone back through and made sure that we're, um, charging correctly to the 100% allocation so we can use as much of our state funding before we use county funds. So, we found a little cost savings that way as well.
And that came out of the, um, 2015 workload study that they did in child welfare. And so, they determined at that time, based on, um, county's tax base and things, uh, quite a bit that went into that study, but it determined which counties would receive a 100% allocation that didn't have the county match. And so, we receive about $400,000 of that a year. And so, we have staff charged there, um, prior to the 80/20.
I would say you and Tatiana, really in your attention detail, was critical for the success of this department. You know, but-
We find it fun. I know. It's like a puzzle, like, oh, this piece can go under here, why didn't we see that before? And we get to read memos, which Tatiana doesn't enjoy as much as I do.
The other place, actually, as I was thinking about it too, that we will see a little bit of a decrease is within county admin. So, we did receive that PHE funding for a little while, um, in order to help, um, for the processing of applications with the unwind of a public health emergency. There's some counties that received a significant amount and hired, say, 10 staff. Um, we actually, um, held a placeholder for one staff and then utilized most of it for overtime. And so, that is gonna expire at the end of June. And so, we won't be able to utilize that for overtime as much as we had in the past. We've had to end that.
Other questions on the financials?
So, for LEAP, um, we did get an email saying that the federal LEAP staff were all dismissed. Um, Colorado LEAP did get 90% of the, um, admin funding allocation for this year. So, they didn't tell us any of our LEAP funding would be cut this year. Um, it does, they did say that they confirmed, um, previous years, they would take any, uh, extra funding they had in LEAP and they would divvy it out to payments for people who had already been approved, the applicants. And they confirmed that that will not be happening this year because of that 10% they don't know if they're gonna get and just to be more cost savings. Um, for FY '25, we're currently at 14, uh, 1,430 approved, uh, applications. This time last year, we were at 1,539. Um, the LEAP meetings they have, they think it's due to the temperature was a little warmer this year than last. Um, we do have currently 312 denials. Um, and they did want us to let everybody know that if you did have a denial that was because of no signature or you didn't turn in anything, you have until June 30th, or even, yeah, June, wait, I wrote it down because I kept saying June 30th, but it's not.
April 30th.
Uh, no, for the, um, denials, it's June 12th. You can turn in what you were missing and still be reconsidered to be in the program. So, the applications themselves, the deadline is April 30th. And I think, um, 238 of the denials were missing, um, pieces. So, those ones could be overturned if they were to turn what was missing in. No, uh, so far, um, about 550,000 of LEAP benefits have been paid to our county this year.
Wow. How much again?
Uh, 550,000. Which could be, um, heating bills, electric bills, or, um, new equipment replacement or, uh, repaired to.
Other questions? For Nicole?
No. Thank you.
Uh, moving on, we'll go to self-sufficiency, um, and Lori's programs. We did, um, we are working with the state for our C cap processing of case reviews. The state, sometimes it can be a very duplicative process because, um, you can be doing some of those reviews for the same home, um, with just different children that they're pulling, right? And so, sometimes, um, that process can last a little bit. So, Lori's been working with Alex and QA and, um, the supervisor. And so, she has been trained to be able to complete those case reviews. We'd like, um, to see the state make some changes that way, but I don't think it's gonna happen with everything that's going on. So, we just have to kind of, um, continue through with our, um, QA on that. So, we've started and initiated that process to make sure we're, uh, caught up through the rest of the year. Um, and then also, we receive that extra financial support, um, in C cap, which was significant. 15 million for this year and then 10 million for the next year and the next year, um, of those three-year increments. Whether or not, um, it's going to be enough is still the question, but at least it's a start. And so, again, just thanks, um, to the board for advocating for that funds for our county and for the state as well. Um, so our eligibility technicians, um, we have gained, um, two more technicians. It's hard sometimes, as much as we wanna hire as many as we can, that training implemented, implementation is difficult. And so, um, so we are doing interviews again, probably in the next round, um, after we've gotten the two new hires trained up. One started yesterday and one started, I think, two weeks ago. Um, and so, um, we're looking forward to seeing, you know, our, uh, us be able to move towards a place of being fully staffed there. Uh, we have had a few instances where we've made offers and, um, and they've accepted and then changed their mind. And that's happened a couple times even after they, they accepted. So, um, so we're hopeful for that. Did you just knock on wood?
I did.
Good job.
Something like that.
Right. Um, and then-
And in that regard, what is the most effective way of reaching new, potential new employees?
I think a lot of it potentially is word of mouth. Um, I think that we've been advertising the same positions. Some counties have gotten creative and tried to rename them a little bit as community sports supports, uh, community support specialists or things like that, instead of just eligibility technician to see if that attracts. Um, we haven't seen any data that that's actually making a difference. Um, but I think that the, the salary increases and the salary survey that we did over the last couple of years really benefited our county for that. Um, and I think, I know that, um, HR's working on a video, which we've always thought was pretty interesting. We've seen some from other counties of what a day-to-day looks like. Um, and so, there could be some opportunities there. But I think a lot of what we've seen is people, um, that want stable, dependable careers at this time. That's at least what we've heard from the most recent applications or applicants. So, um, I'm hoping that that, just the county government and a long-term career. And we always advertise the fun bunch also. Hopefully, you know, building morale and things like that help. But some of them, uh, of our applicants have been friends of other people that they've known and referred to the positions, so. Combination of lots of things, I think.
I think we're gonna have a booth at CMU soon, too.
Yeah.
Um, but I think they're having like a career fair because it's the end of the year.
And HR went up to the high school also and did the, the job fair there. And so, advertised for some, some of our positions that way, too. Anything you wanna add on eligibility? Or Tanner? Um, okay, moving on to, um, adult and family services. Oh, I have the Met's name on here still, I didn't change that. Um, so we are going to be hiring for that position, um, for the administrator position in this next month. Um, uh, we are looking forward to what stability that could bring, uh, to the unit. Currently, I'm, I'm still covering those, um, those immediate needs, but the supervisors are strong. And I think they've grown a lot in the last couple of years. And so, they're able to cover as much as, as much as they can. And, and so then, um, I'm able to just really provide a lot of support to them and that's been helpful. Um, we do have our Child Abuse Prevention Fair this month. So, just a reminder on the 23rd, um, for, uh, I will, um, submit, uh, my documents to you for, um, the, the fair, but also the proclamation. And, uh, we are expecting a lot of people there, um, stakeholders and booths and bump and jump. And so, uh, we'll have food and drink and fun, so.
Not at least 20 vendors RSVP, so, are there 20, uh, to go forth and play?
No petting zoo.
It sounds like a door or something. And it's hot dogs.
He does help with the grilling quite a bit, too.
That's why there's no petting zoo, the petting zoo's been turned into hot dog.
We got a running, um, radio last year. We pushed pretty hard on Facebook, we, uh, press release, um, and so I think that is going to really push attendance this year. We kind of updated the language a little bit. Um, we're kinda going with a little bit of a softer tone as far as like, this is, um, a chance for, uh, child safety in our community and, um, leaving the abuse part a little bit in the messaging. So, um, we're trying a little bit of different strategies this year. I think it could boost attendance.
We also put a Spanish and English, um, DCI, um, poster in this week.
What do you, what would you like the commissioners to do to help you, one, promote this and be part of the activities there?
I think, um, anything, uh, as part of the press release, I think your attendance will be great. I think to be there, we have announced, um, you know, that your support, um, to our staff as well. Um, and then to the community, they know you will also be there. We've distributed with the schools as well. Um, but I think just being there and interacting and, and supporting, um, our caseworkers and supporting the local providers, because the local providers also work really hard on prevention work and, um, we work really closely with those to support families. So, hearing from you, I think the providers would be, um, would be happy to see that support from you all as well.
I think that, I think people would really like to see you in the bump and jump, actually.
Definitely.
You just got a chin. And we'll, we have the blue ribbon again.
Yep, we have ribbons. And we actually, this morning, put up our pinwheels, um, and took a photo also, which we'll send over. Um, I know the Health Department has also done that, um, so we are supporting all blue.
So, Motor Club Motorcycle Club's still active?
Um, I believe so, and I believe they're company.
At first I was like, is this a spam email? Same goat, but, oh, okay, now I know who you're from.
So, Michael will be there on his Harley, I guess.
That, um, that organization has really, especially in the last two years, supported, um, some youth in some very tough situations, um, and advocated for them. And it's, it's been really nice to have their support. Um, and the other part I wanted to mention, I, um, about Project 127 as well. Um, Nicole had mentioned the care portal piece. That also, um, will allow not only for our, um, our kiddos that are in kinship foster care, but it also allows for our TANF case managers to utilize that same portal as well. So, for families that may not be system-involved within child welfare, but are active, um, within Human Services and we're aware of them, we can meet those needs, um, for them as well. So, I think that's important, that it can kind of cover more of the community than just, um, kiddos that are in care. Um, with adult protection, um, we have, uh, two caseworkers that, uh, one is just, uh, newly certified. The other one will attend in May. And, um, we are grateful for Mesa and, uh, Montrose Counties because at the time, um, with you Lisa, myself and Lynette doing some part-time training and holding down the caseload, it's pretty difficult. And so, Mesa and Montrose have all, uh, both volunteered to have those two new staff come to their county so they can do some shadowing and training with them as well, to kind of take the load off of, um, our lead, uh, caseworker at this time. So, we're very grateful for their support as well. Um, so, um, I wanted to acknowledge that piece for them. And I think that's all I have unless you have any other questions.
Uh, they said the state legislature might go into special session in September to address the Medicare Medicaid shortage. Is that, uh, how is that affecting your department?
Well, I think day by day, we're hearing different things. Um, we have heard some information that there could be some work requirements for Medicaid. They may, um, at, uh, I think it was in 2018, they did the Medicaid expansion programs, which allowed for, um, uh, certain populations like adults without children to go on to the program and receive Medicaid and apply for that. So, those expansion populations, we have heard that they are thinking about closing those out. And so, if that happens, that'll directly impact, you know, the amount of individuals in our county that will be eligible and allowed to apply. And then if they do the work requirement piece, um, that almost turns it into like a TANF case manager position for eligibility because you'd be working with those individuals on a more, um, frequent basis of determining if they're meeting a work requirement. Right now, that only happens in certain program areas, it doesn't happen in the Medicaid program now. So, but those are all things we hear. So, it just is gonna depend on where, where feds and state land on those things and it's still changing. So, for us, um, I think we're just trying to stay in the lane and continue to process what we can and then just until something's really set. So, um, but those are the things we've heard so far, I don't know if you've heard-
No, not really, but SNAP has, uh, work requirements. They could be looking at that, uh, system to model for, for Medicaid as well. I don't know for sure, but those are already in place, so.
On the course side, we've been seeing more providers getting certified to take Medicaid. Less billing.
And hopefully with that expansion, so that was the, um, that was the process that they went through, um, in the three-year phases that HICPuff had to implement, increase their providers and in, increase capacity. And so, for example, like this year, High Fidelity Wraparound is a, um, intensive case management service that is, um, now Medicaid billable, but we don't have enough providers to provide it yet. We don't, we actually just lost our only provider that we had in the community. Um, HILPU was that community provider and they no longer are providing that service. Um, so, we're looking to increase, but they also are increasing such things, such, um, so it's a therapeutic mentoring. So, mentoring is something that we spend a significant amount of money in our core services funds for because we don't have strong therapeutic providers all the time and, and readily available for kids that are struggling with mental health and behavioral health issues. And so, sometimes those mentoring relationships can result in preventing crisis and, and stability for, um, their families. And so, adding that piece of it to, and it's never been Medicaid billable before. And as of July 1, as a part of the implementation, it will be. And so, we're hoping that more providers, um, come online with Medicaid and the expansion of services will help in that preventative realm, so.
What is the status of the high needs youth that was in Florida?
So, he's still there. Um, the intensity of, um, things that are happening for him continue to be stable, which is not great. Um, because it's, I mean, it's good and bad, right? So, it's, he's not increasing, he's not decreasing. So, it's really just kind of staying steady in his behaviors. However, um, the application process for them to be licensed under HICPuff as a PRTF, which is a psychiatric residential treatment facility, that application process is being pushed through as fast as they can. We're, uh, working directly with HICPuff providers and that will backdate to January. Once that is approved, that funding balance from January on will allow us to help fund the current pieces of the placement and then moving forward. They're still searching out-of-home placements, um, or out-of-state placements. Uh, the in-state placement has not made a decision yet on whether they would accept him or not. The likelihood of the incident reports that are coming in are still there. Um, but we're hoping that, I mean, he's having success where he's at. And so, if we can determine the ability to fully fund that without it impacting our county, then that's, you know, we're gonna meet his level of care. So, we would like to keep him at where he needs to be until he's ready to disrupt. Um, and we're hoping to, you know, change that financial scene so that, um, you know, we can cover that better. But essentially, we need to meet his needs as well, so. Yeah.
It's definitely-
It is, it is.
Anything else for Annie or team, anybody? I will say that going to CCI, um, I text with Annie frequently about a lot of these bills that are coming up and I really appreciate your depth of knowledge on these things, some way in over my head.
Well, I, I, thank you. And I also, you know, we have a great, with, within CHSDA, so are the Human Services Director and Association. We have a legislative group and we're pretty active. Um, so that's why 8:00 AM, my door is always closed when people get here. Um, and I think that those pieces of it to, there's a lot of legislation that is impacting Human Services right now. Sometimes it comes all at once. And so, um, to break out into little teams and tackle those pieces- to break out into little teams and tackle those pieces and support each other, I'm really grateful to our group for that. So they are really supportive and supportive for the impact to not just large counties, but small and mediums. And so we get to really talk about some of those things that impact differently. A bill can be written one way and not have an impact to a certain size of county, but have a a completely different impact to a small and medium. And we advocate for each other in the same way. So.
Well, I appreciate you.
Thank you.
A lot to you.
We appreciate your support and look forward to seeing you all next week. Thank you. I will get this to you, Lindsay.
Have a great day. Is there anything else to pump for the board this morning?
I have none.
Well, thank you, everybody. We will stand adjourned.